Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this planning board meeting. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Approval of the minutes from the September 13th meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call. Bruce?
I was not at the meeting. I'll abstain.
Okay, Hillary?
I have to abstain also was not at the meeting.
Okay. Dave?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Tom?
Yes.
And April?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to disclosure of conflict of interest. Do any of the board members have any conflicts that they wish to disclose for today's votes?
I don't have a conflict, but I just, for the sake of disclosure, we have a discussion item coming up later about vacant buildings and abandoned buildings, and my family owns buildings, so I just wanted to get that off, get that out. Okay?
Thank you. And if we're not taking a vote, it doesn't count. Okay. Thank you very much. Um, and Randy, you're up.
Hello, my name is Randy Butler. I'm with Deerebo Engineering, presenting hopefully the final go-around for the eight-rod road now named Field of Dreams subdivision located at 208-Rod Road. As you've seen before, it consists of five lots along the eight-rod road with a short, about 150-foot long, 200-foot long road headed into the, to prepare for potential expansion if the park should go that, that route in the future. There's been nothing for changes on the plans other than the fact that we added the location of the proposed fire cistern slash pond where we're likely going to be putting in a cistern, but we'll get that ironed out before too long coordinated with the fire department. Other than that, nothing has changed on the plans. We've got a sealed plan there. I do have a couple of revisions that would like to make to the conditions. Basically, the, the substance of them doesn't change, but there are a couple of things in there that were, I don't think worded quite right or put a little bit more requirement on the developer than what was intended. So I'd, I'd like to address those at some point. If you want me to address them now, I can, or if we can address those when we go through the findings of fact, perhaps.
That language is verbatim out of the fire, deputy fire chief's.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just trying to pull up the findings and facts here.
Again, I'm not looking to change the substance of the, of the language, but just trying to clarify, as I read his requirements, it brought a couple of questions to my mind. I called him up to clarify them and just reworded them, just so there's no question in the future as to what his, what the intent is.
Sorry, Ann.
I think if you have the plan, but the board is going to need to sign this.
Okay.
You don't have to write on it.
So what, do you want to change it, Randy?
Okay, if we go through them line by line.
Yeah.
He says prior to construction, building slash construction slash fire protection plans of the proposed buildings and expansion shall be submitted to Waterville Fire Department, et cetera. And I, I emailed them to confirm what is their intent there, and, and this is more of a, this would be more in line with a commercial building. They're not expecting and don't plan to review any plans that are put together for buildings. You know, in other words, the fire department does not review residential, single-family residential buildings. I just wanted to clarify that. So essentially omitting that one just because it's not applicable to this project. The second bullet, bulleted item, the developer shall provide adequate water supply to meet domestic demands and fire protection needs per NFPA 1, Chapter 18. Sounds great on the surface, but to clarify, the developer himself is not responsible for supplying domestic demands. In other words, he's not responsible for providing wells. You know, these are all going to be individual wells, and yes, the, the plan is for him to build these five lots, but we don't want to lock him into that. Suppose he does three or four of the lots and says, well, I just want to sell outright lot number five. Let them put their well in, their own well in. So it's, it's not correct to put that requirement.
But we still need to make sure that there's the adequate fire suppression needs.
Correct, yes. Yes.
And this is directly, like, I had reached out to the deputy fire chief as well, actually, for clarification on some of these.
Okay.
A couple of weeks back, and he had pointed me to the national fire prevention.
Right.
Whatever. And I read, it's, this is what all developments need to go through, right? And they're in there to make sure that whatever you choose for.
Yeah.
Fire suppression needs are adequate for the four, five houses that are going to be built there that aren't near a hydrant.
Right, absolutely. I'm absolutely fine with the fire protection portion of that. My, my bone of contention is with the domestic demands. That's, it's not up to the developer to meet the domestic demands, to provide individual wells, for example, for everyone. If he's developing the lot, yes, he does, but it's not up to him to put in those wells. If, suppose he sells just a lot outright, it's not his responsibility to do that, so we want to make sure that that's not a requirement there.
Okay, David?
Yeah, but in order for us to approve the subdivision, in the subdivision ordinance, it says that there, you know, there's a requirement that there is adequate domestic water.
Yes.
So.
True, but that's not the developer providing that. I guess as long as, if we can come up with some different language.
If there's any concern about there being enough domestic water, I think that we need to reopen that discussion.
Oh, there's no, no concern about there being enough. My concern is we don't want the developer, we don't want Rick Breton. If he, suppose he sells lot number five outright.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want it to be a requirement of Rick Breton to put a well on that property if he sells it outright. That's what I want to clarify. It's up to the homeowner to put that well in.
But, but then it's not part of the subdivision anymore, so.
Yes, it's still part of the subdivision.
But the plan you've brought us is five, that you are going to build five houses.
That is the intent, but things, who knows? Things change, right? Something happens to Rick, or something happens to the company.
Sure, I mean.
We're not going to lock him into that.
That would be part of the purchase and sale agreement.
Um.
I mean.
To, well.
Should something happen?
Well, again, I don't, I think the way this is worded, I think it puts a requirement on Rick. Suppose, who knows? Rick's in hurricane country tonight. Suppose something happens and he's not able to get back to Maine, right? Something tragically happens to, to Rick. You know, nobody knows what tomorrow brings. We don't want to put that onus on the developer to, to provide, for example, a private well. Yes, we've done, I understand what you're saying, David. We've done the homework to show that there is adequate supply in the ground, but it's not up to Rick to make sure that that water gets into the house for the houses that he's not selling, for the houses he does not construct. For houses he constructs, absolutely no problem, but I suppose he, you know, he, he still has the option of just outright selling these five lots.
Right, and it.
Nothing's locking him into these.
But Randy, if we take that out and you build three houses, you could say, I'm not going to make, there might not be adequate, now there's not domestic, domestic water for those three houses. Like, there's no requirement, right? So what about the other houses? So say you do only three of the five, and we take all of this out, what's holding you to making sure that there's adequate water supply for the domestic demands of the three houses that you've put together, that you've actually built? I don't think we can take out parts of the subdivision ordinance just because of a what-if all five don't get built. I don't under, we have to protect the plan in front of us, which has been provided.
I mean, we, we could put in there, you know, to meet the domestic demands of the homes that the developer constructs.
Yeah, I'm fine with something of that nature.
You know, I mean, number two of the findings and facts is that there is adequate water for the subdivision.
One what-if that concerns me is that we heard testimony from one of the butters at a previous session where they have very high iron content, and I'm concerned that there may not be potable water available for the, you know, at the well level for these homes. People could be stuck with a non-potable well.
I'm not sure, I can't 100% state on potability. I can treat, I can tell you that we treat water all the time frequently, public water systems. You know, we probably have 30 or 40 public water systems that are our clients, and some of them have iron and manganese issues, and we do treat that water. We have methods to treat that water to make it potable. So I, I have no question that we can make that happen.
Bruce, do you have a question?
Yes, thanks. It sounds like what David suggested, suggested would, you know, fit, fit what the developer wants to do. It seems reasonable.
I think my concern is just that this information came directly from the fire department, and when I reached out to the fire department for clarity, this was how I understood it needed to be done as well. Unless he's provided a different letter and different information, I don't see how we can change conditions that the fire department has asked for.
Yeah, I've got a, I wish I had printed in the email. I, I don't know if he specifically addressed that, so I wouldn't dare to say that he did when I, when I discussed that with him. We did discuss the fire protection, so I don't have anything in writing from him I agree with on that.
Because my understanding is part of this, this language is in there so that when you do construct the fire pond or whatever fire prevention you decide to construct, that's sufficient, that gives you the ability to decide what type of fire mitigation you want to have on the development, but also the fire department, the ability to inspect that and make sure that it will be adequate, right?
Yeah, absolutely. No, no question on the fire protection. I'm absolutely fine with the fire protection portion of the statement. We will provide that, that's required, no, no doubts on that. It's the domestic portion that I'm concerned about. Domestic referring to the, supplying the houses. Again, it, it's typically not put up on a developer, other than the study that we did, the hydrogeological assessment that we've done to show that there is theoretically adequate water to meet those needs. Is typically not put on the developer to, to provide, for example, a well for each of the, each of the site, the lots. Except, as David suggested, I'd be absolutely fine with the language that David suggested, to have, to revise the verbiage to meet the domestic demands for the lots that he constructs. That's reasonable.
Ann, is this different than the other, like, have we ever gone against what the fire department has specifically asked for? It just, I, I'm not comfortable with taking that out unless I've received a different letter from the fire department myself.
Is that, do you know if that's standard verbiage that he's provided on other subdivisions?
No, I don't know that. This is from Jason Frost, our new deputy.
Right, right, right.
You have to turn your mic opposite on.
No.
No?
Okay, yeah. The letter is from Jason Frost, our new deputy chief, not from Chief Essler, so.
Right.
You know, and most of the developments that we have in the city have access to hydrants.
Right. Right.
And this is where this information is coming from, and why Jason has laid it out this way is because you don't have access to a hydrant or a public water supply, right? Bruce?
Yeah, um, I suppose couldn't they, if we put it as-is, and he decided to sell a lot later on, I suppose at that point it could be addressed, correct?
Yeah, I would agree. You could definitely have the plan amended at that point.
Either the owner would come back or the developer would come back and say, my plan changed. I didn't build the homes. I sold these two lots. Could we have this such-and-such adjusted?
I mean, you and Rick have been in here multiple times now and told us that you're going to be able to start breaking ground and having these five houses done within a year.
Right. That's the full intent. I, I'm not saying.
Oh, I can.
He still, he still intends to do that, yes, but what if? You know, what if something changes, right? None of us, none of us knows what next week brings.
Then you can come back and have the plan amended.
I'd be agreeable, I'd be agreeable with what Bruce suggests. That's a fair, fair suggestion. I'd, I'd, I'd go with that.
And we can make sure that's noted, you know, that's put into the minutes somehow.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Ann's ferociously recording what we're saying over here, so.
Right.
We've got it. But, um, yeah, I think.
And maybe for next, if we do, if we do the second phase, then maybe we can explore that further with the fire chief and have that all ironed out ahead of time. But I guess I'm agreeable, agreeable to what Bruce has suggested. The other, the next item on there, the developer shall provide adequate fire lane to access all structures. That raised a question with me. What, what is the intent there? Again, this is generic language brought out of NFPA, and so I questioned, does that mean you're looking for something for fire access around the buildings, which is not typical for residential structures? This language is more, I think his intent there is that that structure that he's talking about is the fire cistern, and after discussing, and that, that seems to be what made sense to him. So as, as long as we can somehow clarify that, fire lane access to all, to the fire cistern, for example, you know, I questioned, do you need, do we need to provide driveways that are 20 feet wide? And he said, no, that's not the case. And I did forward that email to Ann, I know at some point, so I think you've, you've seen that. So let me tell you what, show you what I've got. If you look at the plans that I've given to you, if you look at the conditions attached to the approval, that's my proposed language. Again, it's, we'll, we'll go back to some of the language that's here, but it's intended to try to clarify. The developer shall provide a 20,000-gallon fire pond or cistern for fire protection needs per NFPA 1, Chapter 18. The developer shall provide adequate fire lane access to the fire pond or cistern, just to clarify that point. And then per NFPA 1.182351, access lane shall be no less than 20 feet wide with an unobstructed vertical clearance of no less than 13 feet 6 inches. So again, that, that requirement that he's got there for the 20-foot access, I'm just trying to clarify that that's for the fire cistern. It's not, we're not requiring that for all of the individual homes.
Yeah, I think that condition makes sense to me.
Okay.
Will the fire department have access to the individual homes? I assume the access will come off of eight-rod road, is that?
Yeah, exactly. Just like any typical home, right? Every house has a driveway, so, so they'll either pull into the driveway or park directly on the road, whatever the case may be. So I just want to make sure that we're not putting undue burden on the homeowner or Rick as the developer. Typically, when I first read that, I'm thinking, okay, for commercial structures, oftentimes you require access all the way around a building, a large enough commercial building, so you're requiring access all the way around, and obviously, we're not going to do that, require that for a single-family residence.
Yeah, but you have to turn around and all of that, as long as they can access the pond.
Right, correct, yes.
That's how I would understand.
Right.
Do we have, we don't have a location for that pond?
Yes, we do. Yes, we put, we've shown it on there. If, if you look on the plans, it's kind of, if you find lot three.
Yeah.
It's kind of out behind lot three. That's proposed fire cistern. So eventually, it's kind of laid out so that eventually it will set on one of the larger lots, and then we'd have an easement to that.
Okay. It will, it will not need to be moved when the other lots are.
Correct, correct. Yep, no, it's located there with that purpose so that there's a lot line, potential lot line just to the northwest of that. So this will lie on a, one of the larger lots, so it doesn't obstruct the home construction.
Okay.
One of the questions maybe I should pose, I thought about asking this to Ann earlier, but I initially thought about putting that fire cistern directly on a property line, especially if it's underground structure. The question would be, would that violate anything as far as setback requirements? If, I think we'll leave it here as it is for now, if you, if you're okay with that, but if, for example, for the Web Road, we're going to have to do something similar there. So if you're okay with it being on a property line, that would be the most sensible, sensible thing for me, that lies on a property line. That way, it's within the setbacks, it's only a 26, you know, it's like an 18-foot by 24-foot structure if it's just a fire cistern, so it's a half of a house foundation kind of thing, so it's not very large.
How does the cistern work? It's a concrete structure that's buried?
Yeah, there's, there's two or three different ways of doing it. That's one way. It's, it could be a totally concrete structure, not unlike a, a house foundation, maybe a little bit thicker walls, and then something for concrete cap over it, and it could be totally buried out of sight, out of mind. Another way to do it would be to have your foundation come up a little bit above grade, like you would a house, maybe 18 inches, and then just put a roof over it, so all you see is just basically 18 inches of that, and then the roof. That has a little bit of advantage, just so that people know where it is, and then it would have a dry hydrant coming out of it. Either way, whichever configuration you go with, it would have a dry hydrant connected to it, so that'd be the signal, you know, that'd be what people will see on the ground, whether it's buried or not, they're going to see the dry hydrant, that's what they know, how they know where it is and what it is.
It would be like a single structure, it wouldn't be multiple?
Correct, correct, yes, yep. The sizing of it is based on the number of residences and so forth, and it's, well, it's more so based on what do they think that they'll need for an individual, for a single fire event. And 20,000 is what they've told us would be acceptable to them. Another option is to do a fire pond. We're still entertaining that idea, but we're just concerned about if you don't have kind of a steady source of water, and it's likely to be stagnant, and then you've got, also get safety concerns and, you know, other things of that nature. So certainly cheaper to build a pond, but it's a little bit less bulletproof.
So the, the cistern would be fed essentially from the well, is that?
Yeah, we would have to, we would have to have one of the wells assigned, I guess, to that cistern to feed it, fill it, and theoretically, you fill it once, it sits there until it's ready, but we'd have to have some sort of monitoring system to check it every once in a while to make sure that there's no leakage and so forth.
Whereas the pond would be rain-fed, is that?
Rain-fed and, you know, swales feeding it and that sort of thing, and then you have to be concerned about drought periods. Is it holding water, adequate amount of water, and you're going to think about freezing and all these other scenarios you have to plan for and think about, and plus, just the virtue of a pond, it's going to take up more of a footprint, because, you know, with a cistern, you can have vertical slopes, vertical walls, but with a pond, you're going to have sloped, and if it's going to be six or eight feet deep, then it becomes a larger structure, and one of the options that we're considering, especially on Web Road, is potentially doing it as, one of the things we did on the reservoir hill. it as, one of the things we did on the Reservoir Hill Road is the, one of the wet ponds that is serving the development, serving the construction site, we're designating that as a fire pond. So that's a large enough capacity, it's deep enough so that it can meet that need. And we're considering doing that on Web Road when we get to that design. That may be a good fit over on Web Road. I'm not sure if it will fit here on this site quite so well because of the terrain, but...
Just to clarify, on Web Road, there's no pond there now. You'd be essentially constructing it from scratch?
Correct, correct, yes, yep. Yep, if, it was on the Web Road, the lot that was closest to West River Road, we had an underdrained soil filter designed behind that one. The idea is you've got to kind of get these ponds, filters, kind of down gradient of your development so that water from that runs into these. So that's another possibility.
Okay. Any further questions? I'm going to motion that I can read these by number only.
Second.
Thank you. Any opposition to that? Great. Randy, do you have a copy in front of you?
I do.
Okay. Number one, water pollution.
So you just want me to say true or false?
True or false, yep.
Correct, okay. True.
Okay, number two.
True.
Number three.
True.
Number four.
True.
Number five?
True.
Number six?
True.
Number seven?
True.
Number eight?
True.
Number nine?
True.
And then we have the fire conditions attached. Any, I'm going to motion that we accept the findings and facts as provided.
Second.
Thank you. Bruce, is there any further discussion?
So we're not editing the language?
No. I mean, I don't know if you need the, the developer is making a 20, like, that condition number one that Randy added on the plan, Ann, where it talks about per NFPA 1, Chapter 18?
Right, yeah, that...
The access, I mean...
Right, that note number one was kind of a combination of, kind of these first three, really, is what it boils down to, is trying to clarify those first three bullet points.
They can't see the plan, which makes it very difficult, you know, so, um... I'll read it for you guys. So this is what Randy had proposed on the plan to sort of summarize these first three bullet points. And it says, "The developer shall provide a 20,000 gallon fire pond or cistern for fire protection needs per NFPA 1, Chapter 18. The developer shall provide adequate fire lane access to the fire pond per NFPA Chapter 1. Access lane should be no less than 20 feet wide with an unobstructed vertical clearance of no less than 13 feet 6 inches." Just to kind of clarify, the fire access to the pond, not necessarily all the way around all of the houses.
Yeah, and we said we were going to keep the second bullet?
Yep.
As is. The first bullet actually goes away, right?
That's what I believe, yes.
And then the third bullet would be just wordsmithed a little bit?
Right, the third bullet, I think we could just say, change that to all structures, change that to the fire ponds, fire cistern slash pond would be reasonable for me.
Instead of all structures and say, "Fire pond."
Correct.
So we use the same language as number one on the plan, we're saying?
Yes, for that first.
For the third bullet.
Yep. Oh, I'm supposed to wordsmith this, aren't I?
Yeah, if you're comfortable not, do you want to do it? So we would...
It's a lot to write.
Yeah.
I mean, we could come in and sign it.
Yeah, I think if you trust me to do that, you can come in and sign it. So just to clarify, we're eliminating bullet one, we're keeping bullet two, bullet three is replaced with condition number one on the plan?
Yep.
And number four stays the same?
Yep.
You okay with that?
Yep, I'm fine with that, thank you.
Okay. So we'll do a roll call. Bruce?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Tom?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Who made the motion and who's second?
I made the motion, I believe.
Bruce second.
And Bruce second.
And Bruce, and all on paper?
Yep.
Thank you.
And then item number four for the Web Road subdivision, we, I'm going to motion that we postpone that to our October 25th meeting?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Great, we'll do a roll call. Bruce?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Tom?
Yes.
And April?
Yes.
Okay, great. Number five, discussion only, rezoning both sides of the portion of Main Street between High Street and Hillside Avenue to a new zone that will allow both commercial and residential property uses. This came out of a discussion that we had in a last planning board meeting where Mr. Carter was coming and asking for an amendment to his contract zone. And I just mentioned that I have concerns that we just keep contract zoning this entire strip rather than looking at it more comprehensively. And I think Dave had motioned that we send this to the housing committee and...
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that we table this one until October 25th. The housing committee hasn't had a chance to discuss it.
Works for me. I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Great, we'll take a quick roll call on that. So Bruce?
Yes.
Hillary?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Tom?
Yes.
And April?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, number six, draft vacant and abandoned property ordinance currently before the city council. So this is on my agenda, on the agenda because I went to the last city council meeting and asked that they send it to us for review. The city council is currently considering a vacant, it's not called vacant and abandoned anymore, it's just called vacant properties ordinance. And I thought that it might be helpful for the planning board to also review that ordinance and send some suggestions to the city council. So hopefully, everybody has had a chance to look over the ordinance and some...
And this, I believe, came out of the housing committee?
Yes.
I think there's some people from the housing committee who appear tonight that may be able to speak to us about that.
Okay. Does the housing committee, would you like to start us off? About the vacant property ordinance?
Ellie, is Rebecca Green there?
She's online, I believe.
She's the chair of the...
She's on the Zoom link, I think?
Ooh, and has a hand up.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Rebecca.
I'm just, I'm happy to provide a little background for this ordinance, which did come from the housing committee. Originally, it was actually in connection with another ordinance that we're considering, which is a land bank ordinance, which would help to rehabilitate properties in the city that have fallen into disuse and bring them back onto the tax rolls and maybe even more importantly, with respect to residential properties, to bring them into use as actual housing that people can live in. It came to our attention that there are 77 properties in the city that are vacant right now and that, and some of them are residential, some of, most of them are residential, some of them are commercial. And that would roughly equate to about 100 units of housing, possibly more. No doubt, this number is conservative. So the ordinance is based on one that has been operating in Sanford for several years and has been very successful. The intent really is, is to work with the property owners to, first of all, I mean, it's, it's a, it's an indication that the city prioritizes safety and productive buildings that are, that are reducing problems like blight or unsafe conditions, et cetera, in the city. So it's an incentive for the owner not to just leave it vacant, but to really work towards rehabilitating it or selling it or, you know, bringing it back into use. There were some concerns that this might, that this ordinance might have some unintended consequences with regard to suppressing investment, and that certainly is not the intent at all. And the housing committee has had a few additional, you know, sort of discussions at our last meeting, too, about the distinction between some buildings which are vacant and are large commercial spaces, for instance, the old Boys and Girls Club. Really, this ordinance is intended to deal with that residential house that is just sitting vacant and trying to, as I said, bring that back into a useful purpose for the city. So I'll leave it there, unless anyone has any questions.
Hillary?
Hi, Rebecca.
Hi.
Can you walk me through an example that I have? So, for example, when we moved here from Kansas many, many years ago, when the bubble burst, and we couldn't sell our house in Kansas. And we knew we had a better chance of selling it vacant than if we had someone occupying the house at the time. We wanted to, I mean, we were ready to price it low and sell it, but we had no one biting. And we had it vacant for a while. Under that scenario, walk me through what would happen here? We would have to register our house as a vacant home if it's unoccupied for more than 12 months? I mean, our house stayed, I mean, it stayed unsold for two years. We ultimately did, in fact, make the choice to finally rent it, but I just want to sort of give an example, say we didn't. What would we have to do here?
Well, and I guess that that would be the sort of thing that would be discussed as far as the plan of correction. I'm not sure of the exact term. But again, part of this is about establishing, you know, helping the code officer and code department establish relationships with the owners of buildings which are vacant. And certainly, again, you know, I guess, I don't know because I'm not the code officer, but, I mean, it's a good example. And I think it would be great to have, have code enforcement weigh in on that and explain, you know, sort of how that would work. Right now, we're not really in the position of houses, we have the opposite situation, where houses are being snapped up, but some of them are being left and they're, they're deteriorating and it's causing, you know, it's causing problems. We've seen, we've had fires in one, we've had shooting in another, you know, so...
Yeah, no, I mean, it's very easy to think of the, I mean, it's very easy to think of why it could be a good idea. I'm just trying to think of, you know, a scenario that I know it could have been for us. So I'm just wondering if this is, you know, would we have to register our house? Would we have to pay a fee to basically keep it vacant? You know, when we were paying two mortgages at the time? And we were strapped and borrowing money from family. So I'm, you know, so not every, not every scenario is as black and white, and I understand it likely wouldn't be the majority of the cases, but if I can think of one, you know, then it could happen to someone. So it's just, we want to be able to think through those types of cases and have an answer for them. But that was, that was something I was just thinking about as I was looking through this. Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Bruce?
Thanks. My question, I have two things, I guess. Out of those roughly 77 homes or so, do we know how long they have been, you know, vacant? The condition may be, but roughly, I mean, is it three months or three years on some of them? That might be good info to have at some point. And then the other is, what happens now? We have no say on anything unless it's in, I would expect if it is not up to code, so to speak, it can be condemned if it's in. So you know what the process is now, in a place that might be vacant, it's been vacant for years, the roof is ready to collapse, the wall might fall down on the sidewalk or, you know, what happens now?
When you say now, do you mean, like, if this ordinance, you're saying, are you asking what is the practice right now?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we must have something that we can do and some...
So I think, Bruce, that's an interesting segue. I'm glad you brought up that point because we do currently have, I think, there's a very big difference between blighted properties and vacant properties. And what we're talking, what Hillary's example was, was a vacant property, right? Someone was still caring for the property, they were actively trying to sell the property, they had a plan for the property. What Bruce just posed is a blighted property, one that is unsafe, unfit, and we do have an ordinance for blighted properties. And we have an ordinance for, very clearly in Section 5 of that ordinance lays out what to do if the property is vacant and/or abandoned and how the code enforcement officer can remedy that situation. And it is, it even has the fines associated with the blighted property and all of that. So I guess my question is, why do we need a new ordinance? Or could we just expand on some of the language that we already have to solve, to solve this issue that we're talking about? Dave?
I mean, I think, in my opinion, one of the reasons that I like this ordinance is to prevent the building from becoming blighted in the first place. So it, that, once that starts to happen, once a building has been abandoned and unmaintained, it reaches a certain point and then it goes to beyond repair very quickly. And I think if we wait for a building to be identified as blighted, we've waited too long.
But the vacant property, the ordinance that we have already to deal with vacant buildings already, if there's a code violation or a safety hazard within that building, it very clearly says it, I'll read it. It says, "An owner and mortgagee of a vacant building must adequately protect it from the intrusion by trespassers or disorientation of weather. A vacant building shall be deemed adequately protected from intrusion by trespassers or from..." from intrusion by trespassers or from deterioration by weather if it satisfies the following building maintenance standards." And then it lists them all. So there are, so building owners are already required to ensure that their buildings are being taken care of. So if it's not happening, then I think we need to ask why it's not happening or why it's not being enforced, right? I think part of the reason why I wanted to bring this to the planning board is to take kind of that 10,000-foot look at this. So like, if we have 77 vacant properties, which I've asked for a list of and haven't received yet, so I I can't tell you where they are in the city. But if we have these vacant properties, why are they vacant? If the housing market is this hot and you're supposedly able to turn over all of these apartment buildings and make tons of money off of them, why aren't these ones selling or why aren't they for sale? What is prohibiting them from moving? What is the roadblock to them being redeveloped? I can tell you, just from my own job and work and people that I know that are in real estate, a massive roadblock to them being redeveloped right now is a huge influx of inflation on building supplies, not being able to find developers to do these projects. I mean, I can't see why we would want to disincentivize or penalize people for non-development in this market rather than incentivize development. And and Rebecca said that this ordinance is to incentivize development, but providing a fine is not an incentive. It's a penalty, and that's a very different thing, right? There are ways to incentivize development that we can look at. Biddeford has been doing an amazing job at incentivizing new development, bringing in new businesses, cleaning up their Main Street, all kinds of things. But this is more of a penalty. So I'm asking, why? Why are these properties vacant? Is, do we have this a bigger vacancy rate than other cities? What is our, what is the vacancy rate of Sanford or Augusta or Brewer? Paula, you have to come up to the.
I'm Paula Raymond, and I'm from Ward 7. And I appreciate all of your questions about the why properties aren't selling, why properties aren't being renovated. Six years ago, there was a study started by a small group of us from Kobe and headed by the anthropologist professor at Kobe. And we did it two summers in a row, and we did the whole city. We did all seven wards. My concentration has always been in the South End. And 20 of the 77 homes or buildings we're talking about right now are in the South End. They have been there a long time, and some of them are in serious disrepair to the point where they do need to be either taken down or something needs to be done. They've gone from being vacant to being blighted. And you're right, what happens is if something's neglected for a certain period of time, oftentimes there's no recovery, it has to go. And we have people who own properties that live next to these properties, and it brings their property values down. It also creates a problem of people coming that are homeless that might want to use them in the wintertime. And that's when you get fires and other things happen. Then you have the critters because the South End is by the river. And so now you have critters coming. So I want to be more specific about that neighborhood because that's where I live. I will say that that study was documented and forwarded to the City Hall twice. And so it's still, I still have a copy of it if anybody wants it. One of the reasons that I'm an advocate for this particular ordinance is that it gives it more teeth as far as accountability for those who own the property. Sometimes a penalty is an incentive for somebody to move forward because you don't want to keep paying that penalty. And so you're going to do something about it. Or you're going, one way or the other, you're either going to sell it or you're going to renovate it or you're going to take it down. But there has to be a timeframe. We're talking years, just in the community that I serve, years of neglect of buildings that are sitting there doing nothing. Not just three years ago, five years ago, just a long time ago. So that would be some of the things that I would say in answer to your questions about why aren't things selling? It isn't just because of values of, you know, properties have gone up, not properties, but materials have gone up. It's simply that some people sit on properties for hoping to get a a certain amount of money. Some of them, people have passed away and it just sits there. I can remember calling a lady that owned a property on Reddington Street, and she thought it was still in good shape, and she hadn't seen it for years. But it was in the family. And it's just, there's so many variables to your questions.
Yes, but why isn't the code enforcement officer doing something about those properties?
That's a good question.
He has an ordinance that allows him to do it.
Okay, first of all, he's one person until recently. Now, there's two.
Right.
And we're looking to hire a third. Try to imagine being, and I'm not.
I'm not saying, I'm not putting down the enforcement officer at all. But I'm saying, why do we need another ordinance when we have one that's existing?
It's not complete.
That allows him to do something.
It's not complete. As far as the way this one works and that one works, it's not complete. It's not giving him the teeth he needs to do the job he needs to do.
Because this is what I think is going to happen with those fees on this property, that someone died and it's just in some trust and no one even knows about it or whatever the case is in the South End with these abandoned properties that have been sitting there like that. They're they're not going to pay the fee. They're not, they're going, they're going to let a lien go on their property because clearly, they're they're not going to pay. These fees are going to grow so fast for some people. They're very high, so.
It's speculation, though. And I really, I really am tired of speculation and waiting for things to happen. It, you, we can't do that. We have to make a decision, make it stronger, give the code enforcement officers the teeth he needs or she needs to do the job and allow us the time and the energy to see how that works for a change instead of speculating. I really appreciate what this, Alison, not Alison, I forgot, the lady who is here. Her her scenario. It happens, but we make choices. They chose to move here, they chose to want to try to to sell their property. It didn't work out. Would there have been a fee rather than a fine, if you want to call it that, that they have to pay, that they probably? But there could be another scenario and then another scenario. And you've mentioned a few scenarios. We could do this forever. We have to make a decision. And the Housing Committee has spent already over a year on this one and another one. It's time for us to be allowed to move forward. And if you want to come to a Housing Committee meeting and state your causes again and help us to fashion this rather than, say, we've already got an ordinance committee or an ordinance for vacant homes or buildings, let's work it so that it gives the CEO the teeth he or she needs to do the job within a reasonable amount of time and allows people who own property, whether it's commercial or home owning or rental, allows them time to, because I can't imagine that the city, after all these years, would be a hard nose about someone genuinely trying to make an effort to make that building sound. It doesn't make sense to me that people would do that because they've not done it yet. No one's been that way. So I believe that it's time for us to, we're looking at the Main Street, and there are properties that were initially, this is before the pandemic, so we're looking at least three years. The face that covered the old buildings was taken down. There was an article in the paper about what was going to go on in that building. It sits there, nothing has happened.
But Paula, my question is, why? What do we have going on in the city that's prohibiting this development? We sat on the Lockwood Mills project for years, we sat on Seaton for years, and none of those were able to be viable.
And they're still not.
Please don't interrupt me. None of those were able to be viable until we had extensive state funding come through that made that property viable. People have been waiting for the right tax credits and and the right housing programs and the right commercial properties and the right TIF credits and the right tenants to go into their buildings for years. I don't, I don't know if you understand the complexity of redeveloping some of these large, large commercial buildings. But it, you can't just redevelop it because you want to, right? No one wants to have a vacant building, right? No one, no one wants to. You have to pay a tax, you have to pay your taxes on your vacant building. You have to take care of your vacant building. You have, like, no one wants it. You want to have a business in there that's viable that you're making money off of. Everybody wants to make money, right? And so, like, what is prohibiting people? Are, I'm asking, one of the things I want to ask is, are there zoning problems that are prohibiting people from being able to do things with some of these buildings? On Main Street, you can't have housing on the first floor. It's in the zone, it's against the zone. So those buildings you're talking about would not be able to be housing, right? So are there building codes that prohibit people from redeveloping buildings? Is it a tax credit program that's prohibiting people from redeveloping buildings? We just had one a couple months ago on Highwood Ave that sat vacant for 15 years because it was in a contract zone and it couldn't be redeveloped to anything else. So that's what I want to look at. Where are these properties that we're talking about? And why are they vacant? What is prohibiting people from doing something with it? What is prohibiting them from selling off the property? What, why can't we incentivize or help people do something with their properties rather than putting on additional fees? Because I think that this disproportionately impacts people that don't have a lot of money or smaller developers or people from the city that are trying really hard to invest in downtown or in rental properties in the South End and fix them up. But they can't afford to do it and then have all of these added fees associated with it. So those are some of my my big picture ways of looking at this, right? Like, why are these properties vacant? There's more to it than just like, well, they didn't feel like doing it. Like, obviously, no one buys a building and has a dream for a building or inherits a building in the South End and says, I think I'll just let it fall down. Like, people don't do this on purpose, so why is this happening? And and so those are some of the things I'm wondering. I'm also wondering, like, we have been told there are 77 properties. I haven't been given a list of the 77 properties. But I'd like to know what that vacancy rate is in Waterville versus the rest of the state. I'd love to know, is this an actual big problem or not? I'd I'd like to know why this ordinance was changed to be so vague because it doesn't even define, no one can even tell me what would be considered a vacant property. No one can tell me if it's a property that's on the market, like Hillary said, if you're trying to actively sell it. Because Brewer has a vacant property ordinance, and if the property is on the market in Brewer, it doesn't qualify for vacant property tax. So I want to know a lot more about this. I want to, did you only look at Sanford's? Or did you look at other cities' ordinances as well?
This was not, I can't speak to that because I didn't personally do that. I just know that I've supported the vacant and actually abandoned buildings ordinance myself. And I did it because of the study I had done. And when I did it, I did it just in the city of Waterville, all seven wards, to see what was going on there. And so that, and that was six years ago now. And so that was, and the reason for it was to help to curtail some of the issues with vacant and abandoned properties. And to your point, if people deliberately just let something sit, I'd have to disagree with you, that does happen. They do deliberately just let things sit. Even people who buy properties that are rental properties, they do sit and let them sit and deteriorate because it benefits them tax-wise. They just do. That's our experience.
Okay, well, I I could tell you that the ones that you just cited on Main Street, that is not the case. So let's not make assumptions about people based off of just what we've seen, right?
No, I didn't, I didn't do that. I did say that in, well, our experience has been in my neighborhood is that we have seen that happen because we've spoken to property owners before and we've asked the questions. And, you know, their responses have not always been very pleasant or very businesslike. So I just, again, like you say, let's not make assumptions that, you know, it's that kind of a thing. And I appreciate Samantha, really, all of your questions, they're viable questions, and they're something to bring to the Housing Committee. I just really believe that we need to give the CEO, and I feel that, I feel that we're saying the same thing, that we need to give the CEO the teeth he or she needs to be able to go forward and take care of these issues and find exactly all the whys that you've just brought to our attention. Why is it happening or why is it not happening?
I know, the problem is, though, Paula, that this isn't going back to the Housing Committee. It's going to be voted on and pushed through the council without a lot of discussion in the public, right? Like, the first meeting, there was no comment. I was the only person that had an opportunity to comment in the last meeting. And now we're talking about it here, and you're saying, wow, you have great questions. Those should have been brought to the Housing Committee, but I was never invited to bring them to the Housing Committee as the Chair of the Planning Board, right? This was the first I had heard about this two weeks ago. So, and and if it weren't for my own due diligence in requesting that it be sent to the Planning Board, you would have never heard my questions or concerns, right? You know, like, it's just, I, the ordinance is really, really vague. And and I think that the Planning Board should send some suggestions to that. And that's one of the reasons why we're here today. I want to know what happens to houses that are being sold, you know? Right, the way the ordinance was written, the last one, I think, it was 90 days or what? A house could sit vacant for 90 days while it's being closed on, right? That that seems unfair to force someone to file as a vacant property when their house is being closed on after it's sold. So that doesn't even give people an opportunity to move and try to be selling their home, right? It certainly doesn't give people time to renovate their homes. I'm hearing that one of your concerns is that these houses have, need to be renovated, they need to be taken care of. Well, I can tell you, if a house was in that terrible of condition and I'm an investor looking to purchase it, it's not a good investment for me to take on that property because I can't fix, I can't finish it in 90 days during the vacant property ordinance. And then I would, I can't finish it in the six months. I would get charged two fees before I could probably ever come close to getting somebody in it again because you have to pay the fee every six months. And the materials aren't out there and the people aren't out there. The Planning Board's been giving variances to developer, new developers, like we just saw, to finish their construction in five years versus what the ordinance says is three, right? Because they just can't get it done fast enough because they don't have the materials and they don't have the manpower. So it just seems really short-sighted to me to say, people that own properties that are trying to renovate them have to do it within six months, right? Or or they have to pay another another fee attached to it because you have to pay the fee each time. Or, but like, if it's new construction, that's okay. That, that just incentivizes people to tear down homes and start from new, right? So Hillary, you've had your hand up for a while.
Yeah, I mean, I have a couple of things written down. And I think the the first thing is, I actually think we all want the same things for Waterville and for our housing. I think we really do. I think there's, there's just confusion on my part, it sounds like on Samantha's part, about if this is the right way to achieve, what we actually, I I do believe are the same goals. And so I'm just, I'm sort of looking over the ordinance again and and, you know, how it's been reworked. And I'm willing to bet that it's been reworked for legal purposes. I could be wrong about that, though, and that's okay.
Those are Bill Lee's changes. What you have before you are changes just from Bill Lee.
Right, okay. So, so as our Chair was saying, you know, some of it seems somewhat vague. That has to do with us sort of covering ourselves. When you do that, though, then you're kind of left with a document that kind of, you know, leaves us questioning, what's the intent and how effective is it? And what Paula was saying, I think, was really addressing the very real concerns that all of us have in any city, really, about buildings that, you know, are dangerous or unsafe, that attract criminal activity, that are blights. And I think that that's, I mean, that's what is highlighted in the findings of of this ordinance, right? In A, B, and C, I've underlined, blight attracts criminal activity, is a threat to the safety of neighborhood occupants and the general public. In B, endangers the public safety and health. And in C, safe and orderly environment. Those are all legitimate concerns. I guess what I hear our Chair saying and what I'd like to underscore, and and that's why I think maybe we we have the same goals, we're just on a different path here, is we, in fact, have something that addresses blight. And and I hear what Paula's saying is, well, the CEO doesn't really have the teeth to do it properly. And and I think what we're saying is then, you know, then how do we work with what we have to to make that happen? And I think what what my understanding is, the Housing Committee seems to think this is the way to make it happen. And I think, I'm not sure that I agree. I do, I do think. Um, I do, I do think, um, that, you know, houses that are for sale are, are not a threat to the safety of any community, um, unless you see them on, bordering on blight, in which case that ordinance goes into effect. I don't think that's by and large what you're talking about. Are there people who let houses stay because they, you know, on the market because they benefit financially? Absolutely. But that, you know, that's not really what Paula was talking about. And, and again, she's highlighting, you know, places in, in, in Ward Seven legitimately, places that have been abandoned, that are vacant. And let's face it, some that aren't vacant, that are unsafe, that really need to be addressed for the safety of the residents. Those are all legitimate concerns. And I'm, again, looking at this as it's written, I'm not sure that this addresses, you know, an, an answer to solve that. A, a fee. Is a fee an incentive? Maybe. Is it a deterrent? Maybe. Is it a punishment? Sure it is. And is it something that, that, you know, somebody can, cannot pay? Absolutely. Um, and then I guess the, the question that was also raised, is it, is it something, you know, that other people who can't afford it are going to be forced to pay? Most definitely. So I guess, is this the real solution to the problem? I'm not thoroughly convinced that it is. Um, and I feel like this is a, maybe a larger discussion to have. Not just with the, um, you know, with the Housing Committee, not just with our Planning Board, but, but with more members of the public. Um, and then even, you know, as, as our Chair just raised, um, it's actually 60 days, uh, a vacancy that there has to be a permit submitted and that permits are valid only for six months. You know, I, I'm not sure if we, if we go forward with something like this that six months is long enough. I mean, but that would be easy to change. Um, but I, I certainly would suggest, you know, removing houses that are on the market. Um, that would be easy to change. But I, I do think there, there needs to be, um, a larger discussion about the fees and whether they're really effective. And I think, I actually think there, there needs to be, um, a larger discussion with the public. Has that happened? There was, in fact, an opportunity with City Council. I think that's legitimate to say. There was. Should there be a discussion here? Absolutely. Were we given that opportunity? No, we were not. And I, I actually think this needs to be stated publicly. At City Council last week, it was discussed and the City Manager said, "Oh, look, but they can have a discussion. If you have a discussion where we don't have to take votes and we're not required to invite public comment from, from citizens." And he actually said, "That's a loophole." And you know what? I think, I think that's kind of sucky. I think Waterville residents deserve to be part of this process and to engage in a discussion. And I sincerely appreciate the hard work and the care and the concern that the people in the Housing Committee have put into this. I don't want to, to them, to them to feel like I'm putting their work down in any way. And I know the City Council's ready to, to, to take a vote on this. But my understanding is this doesn't go into effect into 2023. So I would really like to encourage them to not vote on this and to allow us to hold a public hearing where we can have some discussion about it. And I think that's all I want to say.
Rebecca, you've had your hand up for a while.
I think I can sit down now.
Yes, yes, I have. Um, so I really appreciate truly all, all the comments, um, that I've heard tonight. I think that the point about houses that are for sale is, is really legitimate. And, um, I have to say, of all of the vacant properties I'm aware of, none of them are for sale. This is not what we're talking about. And I think the Housing Committee and, um, I certainly would be happy to make this ordinance less vague and really specify the issue that we're trying to address. Um, I also want to say that the properties are not just in the South End. I was really surprised to see that they are throughout the city. Every ward has a, a number of them. Um, this, a- and as Paula said, it's, it's years. It's not months. It's years. And these people could presumably put them on the market, um, if they chose, but they are not choosing to do so. And I, it's, Samantha's question is a good one. Why? Why are they just sitting on these properties? Now, um, to the question of construction materials being, being difficult, I have to say, there have been a number of projects, um, going on in the last year and a half, maybe longer, but I've been paying closer attention for the past year and a half. A number of projects of rehabilitating what were blighted buildings, a couple of them on Western Avenue, they looked great. Somehow, those developers were able to do that and it wasn't because of TIF funds or any special tax credits. Um, however, so it, so it is possible. But I will also concede that there are a vast number of different types of buildings that could fall under this umbrella. And again, I think we should go back and really look at the ones that we're trying to target. Um, I still believe that there's a need for this ordinance because whether you call it an incentive, a disincentive, a punishment, um, whatever you want to call it, um, yes, the point of this ordinance is to spur some action. And in some cases, just find out who owns the building and what their plan is. Um, as Paula said, the city does not have a history of leaning on people, um, to, um, you know, squeezing people and taking their homes when, when there's a, a situation of true need. That's not the intent either here. So let's go back to the drawing board and clean it up. Um, but I, I, I would, uh, I stand by my position that this is a needed ordinance. And whether it's part of the property maintenance ordinance or a separate one, I think is, um, you know, uh, it doesn't matter a whole lot. Um, and as for the public discussion, um, you know, this, this is a public discussion. And I mean, um, a public hearing, I'm not sure exactly what the distinction is, but, um, it, there's been opportunity for the public to weigh in. And I'm not in the room, obviously, but I don't see anyone there. And I would also have to ask, have to ask, why not? If people are concerned about this and there's a need for the public to be engaged, where are they?
We're, we're not allowed to have any public discussion. You're only allowed to speak because you're on the Housing Committee? We, we were, we are not allowed to invite anyone from the public.
No, we can, we can have a pu, like, we have a member of the public here that, that could speak. But, um, I think what Hillary's saying is, there's been very little, um, talk, like, like I've ba- barely seen it in the newspaper until I asked for it to come to the Planning Board. I hadn't, you know, it, the word hasn't really gotten out for it. Uh, and, and to be fair, Rebecca, la, a week ago, I asked for this to be put on our agenda. And so that's not really a ton of, like, we give landowners two weeks' notice in order to come to a meeting, right? So it's not a huge amount of time for people to, to come to the meeting. Uh, also, if I were someone that was developing a property that could fall under your ordinance, I don't know that I would stand up and publicly say, "Hey, this, this impacts me" because that just is, gonna, gonna end up giving me a fee, right? You don't want to admit to something, but...
I, I just want to clarify, though. I mean, these, this isn't intended to penalize people who are developing a property. It's, 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 it's to, um, to bring property, it's to spur development of properties. I mean, in, in a sort of, you know, yes, there's, it's a penalty. Um, but the, the whole point is to, um, work with the owner and to develop a plan for, um, rehabilitating, bringing the property back into, um, uh, into use and not letting it sit idle. So this is not, again, targeted at people who want to develop a property. Um, that is an area where we can work together with the, the Code Enforcement Department, the, you know, planning and, and, um, other, other resources to help developers.
Yeah, I just think that's not clear from the ordinance. That, that's my point.
Okay, and, and that comes through, but I, I, but that, you know, so that should be corrected and, and clarified.
Go ahead, Dan.
Rebecca, I, I did some quick math. Um, and I don't know if any of this math has been done yet and talked about, but that multiplier for every six months, one and a half times, boy, that really hurts.
It really does.
At, at year four, the six-month permit is, is over $5,000 and somebody has paid almost $15,000 in those permit fees. Um, by year six, they've paid $77,000 in permit fees. Seems to me like there should probably be a cap on that. Um, it wasn't that long ago. Uh, my kids are not adults yet and they were still alive when we had the last housing problems. And I remember houses being for sale. Uh, and, and I know we talked about houses being on the market and they, you know, but what if it's a for sale by owner? Does that count? Um, you know, I, I think, if we, if we look at the future, we're going to have another, uh, housing issue that is the opposite of what we have today. Um, where we're going to have too many homes and there's not going to be enough people to fill them all. And to try to tell somebody that over a five-year period they have to spend $34,000 in permit fees, I, I have a problem with that. I, I think that there should be some sort of cap on that fee, personally. So it shouldn't be able to get up to, you know, $600,000 after 10 years, so...
Um, and the idea is, we don't get to year six and not year 10, right? I think that something happens, right?
I think unfortunately, though, the reality is that we are getting to year six, even right now in this hot market, right? We're seeing the, like, look how long the Lockwood Mills has been there. Do you think that someone would purchase that property with the intent to redevelop it if they knew within five years they're going to be paying hundreds of thousands of dollars in, in fees before they even put a window in? I mean...
I don't think that the Lockwood Mill is an example. Uh, you know, it's, it's a different, um, scenario.
But it's a va, it was a vacant property. It still is technically a vacant property.
Yes, right, right.
You know, and these are the things that I'm trying to address. Some of these historic properties that cost millions to redevelop, to get it up to, to code, to be able to put a tenant in it. Let's...
Well, and again, these are different things. And so, and, and we, we need to, we need to clarify that.
One of the...
Difference. And, and one of the things that we talked about is, you know, if, if there's a building permit in place, then that could take the place of, you know, a vacant, a vacant building permit, right?
One of the things that I would, I would just love to see is, um, Article 10, Standards and Conditions. Um, I would love to see if, if somebody is maintaining the property properly, maybe, maybe that should, you know, say, "Okay, now your fee's not going to get multiplied." Right? Your fee gets multiplied if you're not meeting the standards and conditions.
Exactly. And, and again, I really do think that is the intent. I mean, what we, I would really like...
Yeah, but it's not what's written.
Okay, I, I understand. Um, it, it is, it's written in, um, you know, in, in the sense of a plan of correction with the Code Enforcement Officer, but that could cover a lot of different scenarios. So I think it would also be, you know, we really need to have Dan Bradstreet be here to address some of these questions. I can't answer them. Um, but we have talked to him at length a number of times, um, and he's been involved in drafting this. So I really think he needs to be involved in this conversation too because that would clarify a lot.
Bruce, and then we have Rian here, so...
Thank you, Rebecca, Paula, and Planning Board members that spoke as well. Um, and Rebecca answered the question about input from the code officers, so that's great. Um, I do think, we keep talking about, um, these big projects like, uh, the Lockwood Mill, Seton Project. So I, there is no doubt a big distinct difference between some residential properties and commercial. And that might be, uh, I think we know the intent and if they can clarify that a little bit, it'd be great. Because I agree 100%. There are some homes that have been for years. So the, the pandemic had no effect on some of these places that, as Hillary stated as well. Um, and those are the ones I agree we need to get at. Um, I heard Rebecca offer to go back to the Housing Committee. I'm sure those meetings, as I've been invited in the past, we all are, they're, they're open to the public. And so I think we could have input if we want. And, um, I appreciate the work your committee has done. Um, and I do think, though, like, the process, when it went to the council, there would have been two, two readings, I believe. So public had a chance. They would have had a second chance. So, um, I think more opportunity is always good. But I don't think anybody was left out, obviously, intentionally. And if people want to pay attention to what's going on at the council meetings, they can. Um, Amy Calder in the Morning Signal does a pretty good job of putting those, uh, that info out. So people can, um, that want to take that initiative would have been able to speak up. So my question now is, where Rebecca has offered to go back, is it go back to housing, go right back to the City Council? Or does it have to come to us? Or where are we going with this? Would Rebecca like to have some input on that?
Well, um, so it, it, the agenda for the next meeting, I mean, it's, it's on the agenda for the next council meeting. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, it, it's pretty clear we're not quite ready to, to take the sec, final vote. And I would add that last council meeting was to be the second reading and because Sam came and spoke, we, we tabled. Um, so we can table again until we get it right because we do want to get it right. I, at least as close as possible to something that is going to achieve the intended effect, right? Um, and, and there, it, it will be, um, there will be things that come up as, as if the ordinance passes that, um, that no one has yet anticipated and we will, we can address those. But, so to answer your question, Bruce, I think at least we need to discuss it at the, the next council meeting. That is the next...
The 18th, I think.
Item.
Right, is what Claude did.
No, the fourth.
The fourth, okay.
And then the Housing Committee meets on the fifth. And then the next council meeting would be, again, on, like, 17th or 18th.
Well, if it goes back to the council meeting, they can, you know, we've had some discussion here. If it goes back to the council and housing and then back to council again, I see no reason that people can't show up and have input and then you tweak it, the language there. But I think this was a great discussion and it, uh, and I would say, do any of us have a home that has been vacant for maybe seven or eight years right next door that has fallen apart, that is rat-infested? We would probably be speaking differently. But we're probably all pretty fortunate that we don't have a house in blight condition. So, um, I think it is necessary to do something to address those houses in those conditions.
Bruce, Bruce, I can, I can speak to that, actually. The house adjacent to my residence was, uh, in a pre-foreclosure situation that was vacant for over three years before the attorneys could even untangle the ownership situation and, and had, get to a closing. And that took an enormous amount of work. And then it took, uh, over a year to renovate that property. Everything had to be redone from, down to the studs. And these projects take, that's, it's four, on four years for just the vacant property that was next to my house. So I'm just, these...
Right, but I think the key is, there have been ongoing things. Many of these homes, there's nothing at all happening. And I believe the committee wants to really work hard to address those situations.
I agree. I, I think we don't want to make assumptions that nothing's happening, though, because I live in, in that neighborhood, right? And I didn't know that that house was in probate for three years, right? And if Tom hadn't told me, "Oh, we've been in probate with this house for three years", I would have no idea, right? I would have no idea, right? And I would have just thought it's a vacant property just sitting there, somebody's sitting on it. Why won't they sell it? Why isn't it for sale, right? So, so that's where I'm trying to say, we need to figure out why, what's prohibiting people. Rian?
Hey, Rian, Ward 6. Um, I want to come and offer a perspective of someone who isn't on the housing committee um, and who is looking for housing to own in the city and who also has lived next to a property that was vacant. Um, and I guess my first question is, you know, we're talking about properties that have been sitting here and left, you know, unkempt for years. And it gets to that point where there's just code violation after code violation. There's 77 of them identified. But this new ordinance changes that definition of a vacant property very drastically. It goes down to 60 days, or it might have been amended. I haven't seen the one with buildings, and it's only the one that was posted on the council list. Um, and so I'm, I'm curious as to how many properties would all of a sudden be considered vacant and have to pay this fee if the fine is 60 days? Um, and also, I, I guess I just, I don't want to, you know, say over and over again that it takes a lot longer than six months, it takes a lot longer than a year if you buy a property and you want to renovate it. Even, you know, um, living in the area, I know the house, you know, that, that Tom is, is talking about, and that's a house that never had any code violations, never had anything before it was sold and considered vacant. Like, I mean, it wasn't until after, you know, it was, it was, it was sold that people could realize that it was vacant. But that was also because it was being stripped down to the studs and work was being done on it. While it sat there in probate, it, it really, unless you lived in the area and knew what had happened to the prior owners, that's how you knew the house was vacant. So I guess for these houses that are being taken care of, um, you know, especially the ones where there are no code violations, I just, I think, I even think a year is, is, is probably too short of a time period. And also, I don't think that for houses that are well-kept, that have never had a code enforcement violation, it just seems very wrong for the city to come in and say, we're gonna force you to fill your property or pay a fee. That, that's not an incentive. And, you know, when we talk about the revitalization of downtown and all of these old buildings and whatnot, we're, we're doing that with incentives and not punishments. We're giving tax credits to people, we're giving, you know, we're creating these tips. And so it more sounds like if, if there are, you know, vacant properties that are being well-kept that we want people to do something with because there is a housing crisis, I think we should be offering incentives and, and not punishments to these people. Because if the outside of the house looks well-kept up, like, what do we really care what they're doing inside of it? I mean, as long as they're not, you know, running a business outside of their house or something like that, it, it, it shouldn't matter how many pieces of furniture are in it if it's well-kept up. Um, and then, you know, and again, as somebody who is, who is looking at houses, some of these houses that I'm looking at, the ones that are currently occupied, I'm looking at if I buy this house, it's gonna take me two, three years to do all the work that I need to do on it before I, I move in to the place. And that's just looking at, like, right now. We're talking about if the cost of construction goes up, yeah, we could be looking at four years of this property being, you know, vacant, and that's, that's way too cost prohibitive. I don't think I'd buy a house in Waterville if I knew that this ordinance was in effect. And I just flat out wouldn't buy a house in Waterville, because any house I buy in Waterville, I'm gonna want to renovate. Um, and so I just, I think we need to maybe think about these properties that are well-kept up, think about offering incentives instead of punishing people for not filling their house. It just seems, seems absurd to me that that's a direction we would want to go in. So hopefully that offers you a different perspective than, you know, housing committee and planning board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hillary.
Well, I think, um, I think Rian raised an issue that maybe was kind of discussed already at city council. And Rebecca, maybe, um, if you're still there, you can correct me. I mean, I think there's a way to carve out exemptions for, for things like that. Um, i- if, if there's construction or if there's work going on in a house, I don't know that we'd consider that vacant, right? I think, um, maybe the example that was given at city council on Tuesday was, maybe it was Seton. Like, you know, if, if somebody's doing um, abatement work or something. I mean, y- y- you can't physically have someone occupying the building. I think it'd be really easy to, to sort of carve out these kind of exemptions. And I think, I think that's what you had sort of alluded to on Tuesday. Am I right in remembering that?
Yes, absolutely. Um, you know, a- again, the idea is not to run people who are developing projects and to pile up more fees, not at all. Um, and, and to your point, Rian, um, a house that is, um, is being kept up and, you know, I mean, you're right, like, you could have, is it vacant if, like, there's furniture in there? Is there vacant, I mean, if someone's not living there, okay, and it's being kept up. But it's not really what we're talking about here at all. Um, and, and I, you know, I think it's delineated in the preamble regarding the purpose. As Hillary pointed out, it's about safety, it's about blight, it's about dangerous conditions. It's not about people waiting to develop their homes. Um, so, yeah, um, and, and I will, I will say, we, there are also things we need to do to incentivize development. And, and that is also something under discussion. So, um, we need to do, we need a lot of strategies to, to deal with the issues that we're facing, and then this is one of them. But um, but again, it, it's, it's not intended to penalize a development, a development like Seton or the Lockwood Mill at all. And it's not intended to penalize us, a, a first-time homeowner who purchased a house and, and takes a while to develop it.
And I, I would just say, um, yeah, I mean, if there's a way to carve out, like, exemptions for people who are doing that, I think that's easy to do. Um, I, I think I would caution, I mean, I, I mean, I'm with you. I mean, I like the idea, if there's furniture in the house, you know, is it really vacant? But I, I think that gets into a slippery slope.
Yeah.
Right? Like, are you, are you going to, are we gonna be making moral judgment on whose furniture looks nice enough and whose furniture doesn't? I mean, that, that's, right, right? I mean, that, that can get really slippery. Um, so, um, but again, my, my, my point was, and, and I'm not sure if somebody misunderstood it. My, my point was really, I think we were, we were getting at blights, which is really, really different. Um, and, and addressing, you know, homes that really are i- issues that become safety issues. And, and so that's, um, that was, that was sort of my, my, my point and my concern. Um, and I, I also wanted to add, Bruce had made a comment in whether there was public discussion. Yes, in fact, there was public discussion at city council. My concern was that we were not given the opportunity really to advertise and, and have discussion here in the way that we ordinarily would. Which is why when Rebecca said she didn't see a lot of people show up, we, we just, we weren't given that timeframe. That's fine. I, I'm just saying that, you know, ordinarily, we would have a week or two notice to be able to let members of the public know so that we could have an adequate discussion here. And, and my comment that I made was that the city manager vocalized that there was a loophole way to do this, to circumvent that public discussion here. I'm just not keen on that, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think it brings up the point of what is the procedure? Um, in a, in a lot of, in a lot of communities, the discussion really happens at council and then first, and then, you know, and things go to the planning board. Um, we've tended to just send things to the planning board and then, and then, you know, discuss them when they come back to us. Um, so, and this is an unusual situation of an ordinance that didn't go to the planning board first. Um, and, you know, um, and we can certainly look at that procedurally and, and, you know, to determine what, what is ideal for introducing, you know, new.
No, to- totally appreciate that. Love that you guys gave us the opportunity to discuss it. I just, again, want to reiterate, here, I appreciate having the time so that we can invite members of the public to discuss it here. And it just felt like there was enthusiasm to work around having members of the public here. And I'm just not against that.
I would also encourage members of the planning board to come to the city council, too. I mean, I, on this point, we, we have much less engagement than we've had in, you know, pre-pandemic anyway. Um, and, and that, anything we can do to encourage more discussion is great in my books. Um, so I, I appreciate this. I think it's important.
Yeah, I mean, but you, you of course understand, like, the planning board meeting, I mean, we can all come as individual citizens or as I watched them, you know, after, like, I, I watched your discussion after the fact, you know, online. But we can't, we can't, I mean, Samantha can come as chair and say she's the chair, but we can't function as planning board members there, not really. I mean, our discussions have to happen here and we have to engage with the public here. We're, we're not representatives of the public in the way that you guys represent wards, right? We don't, I don't represent a ward. I'm just a, I'm just a member of the planning board here. Um, so our discussions have to happen publicly here with members of the community. It's not that we're supposed to go out into the community and have discussions outside of this, which is why I'm just sort of a stickler for having them here.
If it comes before you, right?
Right, right, no, no, exactly, no, of course.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, I think I just want to say, um, I really appreciate this as well, Rebecca. And I think a lot of great conversation and perspectives have come out of this. I think the housing committee was primarily looking at this from a housing standpoint and looking at this as, hey, we have these, we have these vacant apartment buildings and we need to be able to put people in them, and how, how can we get around that? Um, I know I am looking at it more of like, um, overall development. Like, all of these projects we see, week in, week in and week out of, you know, Seton and Lockwood Mills, and these, these buildings have been vacant for years. And they cost millions to accomplish, right? So it's not just like, uh, we can get it up to code, do, get a plumber in here and paint the walls and get somebody in there, right? Like, it's, we're talking millions and millions of dollars. And, uh, like, with the Seton project, um, it's requiring historic tax credits, which has been one of the hangups for, um, the construction of it, right? And when you do a historic building, you can't take out that building permit until you have your plans finalized with the park service. It's, it's quite literally an act of Congress, right? It, it takes the federal government and all of that. And, and, um, so that's one of the reasons that's taken so long. He had to get every piece of funding and plans in place in order to start the construction. So simply pulling a building permit isn't necessarily a, a solution either. Perhaps we need to look at, um, you know, the planning board has had discussions about adaptive reuse policies and, um, it, the C, uh, the Sacred Heart Church is a perfect example. That's not just a building that we're gonna be able to snap our fingers and put a tenant in and make it not vacant, right? We've had robust discussions here about what types of things could go there. Um, and so I think, I think one of the reasons why I really wanted to have this discussion here is because I'm really concerned that, um, there are unintended consequences of this ordinance um, that go beyond addressing the housing issue and the things that were discussed at the housing committee. Um, and I, I'm worried that it will lead to demolition of some historic buildings that maybe could be repurposed or, or fall under an adaptive reuse policy. Um, I'm, I'm worried that we could end up with kind of some, some projects that just get done just enough, maybe not as redeveloped and beautiful as they could. Like, for example, the, the Sacred Heart Church, maybe they just like throw something in the basement to call it a, um, non-vacant property anymore so that they don't have to pay the fines rather than rehabilitating the whole building and putting in something really nice that the whole community can benefit from, right? So I just want to make sure that we're really discussing all of these um, other properties that could fall under this ordinance as well. Um, because it's not just, the way it's written, it's not just housing, right? So that was one of the reasons why I wanted to have it here, uh, have this discussion here. Um, and I just, I'm really thankful that we were able to. I don't know if there are any other comments, but if not, we can probably motion to adjourn. Okay, do I have a motion then?
So moved.
All right, second. Any further discussion? All right, have a lovely evening.